The school board meeting is called to order. Will you please stand for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mrs. Garza, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Chair Seibert.
Here.
Vice Chair Stevens.
Here.
Mrs. Williams. Mr. Hollingsworth.
Here.
Mrs. Brooks.
Here.
Mrs. Spahl.
Here.
Mr. Eggball.
Here.
Ms. Labeepe.
Here.
Ms. Inland.
Here.
Thank you.
Dr. Newman, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Can I get a motion?
I move that the School Board of City of Manassas approve the public meeting agenda as modified.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Hollingsworth, seconded by Vice Chair Stevens, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the public meeting agenda as modified. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries six zero. Thank you. Superintendent's announcements and spotlights. Mrs. Radford?
Good evening. Thank you. I stand before you to present one spotlight for this evening. As you know, our community partners are vital to the success of our Manassas City Public Schools students. The resources that they provide, the external support, is tremendous. And tonight, we are very pleased to present one of those community partners that is here tonight to share some details about the many ways that they have lended their support to our schools. We have Dr. Eric King, who is here from the Future Kings Organization, and he's going to share some information with us tonight.
Thank you for allowing me to come and represent both Future Kings, as well as the work that we're doing with Manassas City Public Schools. Thank you, board members, for giving me the time to speak. With that, everybody, I have a presentation I'd like to give, so we can start. So, we are partnering to create pipelines of talent into emerging technologies. We have approached Manassas City Public Schools, and we're welcomed with open arms, and we're very happy that we do have a partnership with the school district. So, the rest of this presentation is about our partnership to create pipelines of talent. As I step through this, I'll start by talking about my background, and then I'll go on to talk about the Future Kings organization, I'll talk about how we got to this point in our progression, then I'll follow up with this overview of the Future Kings operation, an overview of the problems that Future Kings are trying to solve in collaboration with Manassas City Public Schools, and then some proposed next steps that I would like to see us complete. So, as mentioned, my name is Dr. Eric King. I am a Doctor of Administration and Policy that I got in 2019 from George Washington University. My keen interest is in using computer-based games for instruction. I owned and operated a small technology-based business for 20 years. I am a retired seventh-grade math teacher, and I started Future Kings in 2009 to change the life trajectory of Black and Latino adolescent boys from economically-challenged homes. And so, that background is a combination of who I am and why Future Kings was established. It's when I was at the beginning of my career as a teacher, when I was converting, as a career switcher, from being a small business owner into being a math teacher. One of the things I saw in the middle school I was working is that there were a lot of incoming sixth graders who seemed that the light of life had already left their body, that they felt there was no hope, there was no expectations of career success. And so, we started Future Kings as a way of trying to put that light back into their lives. So, as an introduction to the Future Kings organization, we have two major components. The first component, we'll spend most of the time talking about tonight, which is our Saturday program. We call that the Future Kings program, and that's a program that started in 2009. The Future Kings STEM Academy is our after-school program, where we partner with school districts for after-school STEM activities. And we'll drill down into that a little bit later as we discuss, or as I present, the work that we're currently doing with Manassas City Public Schools. The Future Kings program, which is our Saturday program, is a multi-year, multi-level program. And, meaning that in a perfect world, we have young men coming to our program as sixth graders, and they stay in our program until they graduate from high school. Each year, they have a series of steps, and they can progress through those technical steps based on performance. Progression is not based on seat time. It is strictly based on performance of the technology that we're trying to train them in. So, our program includes both technical skills, 21st-century skills, and what we call applied learning. The 21st-century skills are soft skills such as presentation skills, workplace protocols, and other soft skills such as that. The applied learning is our version of an apprenticeship program, that what we do is take the classroom knowledges of the technical skills and the 21st-century skills, and then combine them into real-world practical projects, which are led by practicing professionals, but where the participants in our program act as either apprentices or interns or teachers assistants. The levels start with minimal math, and then we increase math involvement at the higher levels. So, if you come in at level one, then we are primarily giving hands-on experiential learning in a way that is instructional for math, and where you're actually using math, but you don't feel as though you are in a math class. And as you move forward, then you get more and more of embedded math in the types of practical projects that you're doing. Parent engagement is one of the key program designs of our program. We think it's very critical that we're trying to build young men into successful adults and people who have a competitive advantage over their peers. That it's important that the parent be involved with us at each step of the way. And so, we have special outreaches to the parents. Sometimes, it means that we have to give them a ride to one of our parent meetings. We make phone calls. We do other things that really, really connect one parent with another parent to try and keep a student involved in the technical training that we're trying to provide. And all the work that we're doing is designed to give our young men a competitive advantage over their peers when they graduate from high school. We want them to have some of the skills that either employers or colleges are looking for. We want them to have our training programs. The multi-level, multi-year programs are designed to give them college-level skills. And when they graduate, so by the time they graduate from our program, then they have gained a lot of knowledges that they won't get again until maybe their second or third year of college. So, that is just one of the ways that we give our guys a competitive advantage over their peers, by giving them advanced knowledges that they'll use when they do get to their college. This is just an overview of the results that we've had over the time. Going from left to right, we are looking at preparing students for their career, and we have a STEM-based college prep focus. We combine them with both peer and adult networks, and the ultimate outcome is that they have a very positive self-identity. We have 100% graduation rate from high school. In this case, a graduate for us is someone who's been at least two years in our program, and based on being in our program for at least two years. We have 100% graduation for those type of individuals. And of that 100% that graduated, 92% wind up going to college. And you can see the rest of the data there. 90% of the students who graduate want to go into a STEM field in college. 96% want their friends to also come and be part of Future Kings. All the boys in our program develop positive peer relationships with other people in our program, and they all also see themselves in a STEM career. 90% of those feel they can become successful business owners, and part of that comes from the fact that we do have successful business owners who come in and speak to our participants on a regular basis. And 85% of the people who are in our program really do believe that their life's possibilities are much greater now than they were when they came into the program. So, how did we get here? Well, we've been operating in Prince William County since 2009. And years ago, Mayor Davis Younger was one of the volunteers in our program. And so, we always wanted to expand into Manassas. And then that, because most of the participants in our program come from eastern Prince William County, so we wanted to expand into western Prince William County. And when she became mayor of Manassas City, then that was just a natural connection for us. So, that was the source of our desire to support Manassas City Schools. So, I contacted Mayor Davis Younger to see if I could get some support for expanding our program into Manassas. And so, she referred me to Meg Carroll at Georgetown South. And then Georgetown, and then Meg Carroll referred me to Dr. Newman. And then Dr. Newman accepted my phone call, and we discussed what we wanted to do and how we wanted to do it, and ultimately wound up with signing a partnership agreement between Future Kings and Manassas City Public Schools. So, in the past year, well, we started that partnership in 2021. And the first thing that we did with that partnership was during the school year of 2021, 2022, we had an after-school program at Metz Middle School, where we were teaching drone engineering and also computer game design. And we also had an Intro to Data Science program that we did at Osborne High School. So, that was the launch of what we would call our Future Kings STEM Academy work in Manassas City. And then, that partnership continued. It was renewed this year. And this year, we started the instructional year with summer camps. We had a biomedical sciences summer camp that was completed at our facility in the Prince William County Science Accelerator. And we also had a drone engineering summer camp that was conducted on the Manassas campus of Northern Virginia Community College. And next week, we start drone engineering after-school activities at Metz Middle School and also at Osborne. We'll be having both drone engineering and computer game design STEM after-school programs at those two schools. And if it's okay, what I would like to do at this point is bring up some of the people from Manassas City who have personal knowledge of the types of work that we've been doing. So, if I could, I'd like to have Alex Barahono, a student at Metz, and also Kevin Martinez, also a student at Metz, and Ms. Sandra Smith Jones. Sheila? Oh, yeah. And Ms. Sandra Smith Jones, who is a teacher at Metz. And I just want them to each just give you a brief overview of what their experience has been with the Future Kings program. I'd like to start with Alex. Just tell him what you did this summer, and, oh, and this is completely unrehearsed.
That's right. So, I went to like the Future Kings, the engineering. So, I went to the engineering, and like, yeah, I said it. Right on the wrist.
Just tell him what you did when you came.
So, we were flying drones and like playing a simulator to like have experience with the drone. And they showed us how to use a 3D printer.
And what do you want to be when you grow up?
So, what I want to be when I grow up is I want to be a pilot from the Air Force.
So, thank you. So, what Alex was telling you was that he was in a drone engineering summer camps two years in a row. He enjoyed the field trips that we went to. We went to a flight simulation at the airport. And so, he was there, and he got a chance to fly that. His dream is to become an Air Force pilot, and so, he feels that some of the experiences he's getting with us are helping him along that way. And then, the second one is Kevin.
So, my favorite camp was biomedical, because since I want to be a doctor, well, that was like a stepping stone for me. My favorite part of that was the pipetting that we did. It was fun. We were also doing something with DNA, learning about it, and I'm pretty sure we were doing something with it. I forgot. Oh, we were doing like, we were making it into like gelatin. Yeah.
Thank you very much. So, during the summer camp, they learned a lot about DNA sciences. And some of the pipetting they did was teaching them how to take samples from a vial and put them into the other. So, they really enjoyed some of that. And they were also exposed to a presentation from Anova Heart and Vascular Institute, where there was a presentation that showed them some of the exciting things going on at the Anova Heart and Vascular Institute, such as using 3D printing to create specialized masks to identify tumors in someone's head. There were a number of other things like that. They're using virtual reality software in order to help simulate some of the experiences that a doctor will go through before. And they've also exposed students to the use of robotics for surgery. So, they were able to contact and interact with some people from Anova Heart and Vascular Institute during that summer camp. And then, the last person I wanted to bring up was one of your teachers, Ms. Smith Jones, who was the sponsor of our activities at Metz Middle School.
Good evening, School Board Chair, Dr. Newman, and School Board members. I'm Sandra Smith Jones, the sponsor and facilitator for the Future Kings. Totally unrehearsed, so I didn't know it was coming up yet. I just wanted to share with you the experience that I've had with about 15 young men and about two females. Even though it's Future Kings, we also had girls in the program as well. The boys would come totally full of energy and eager to learn each and every day. And they would challenge the instructors. And when he said first-level math, this was not first-level math. And these were mostly, majority of them were seventh graders, and this math had to have been college-level math, that they would challenge the instructors, and they would actually know some of the answers before the instructors. So, these guys are really, really interested in the program, and I'm happy to say, most of them will be returning. Starting next week, they'll be returning with us. And not only did they enjoy the program, it's interactive. They had a chance to go outside, to fly the drones. They designed the drones, they designed the games. We were able to put together computers for them with the Unity game on it, that they were able to design and learn so many different things about this program that they like to do at home. I cannot overemphasize the joy that I had just looking at them learning and the excitement that they had, knowing how to use this tool that I know is far beyond the years of a seventh grader and to build it as well, whether it was the drones or the game design. One of the things our principal last year shared with us at the very beginning of the year is, we need to build relationships with our students. And even though I was just their sponsor, I would come in in the afternoon. I only had very few students who would come to me during the day as their reading teacher. One young man said to me, "Ms. Smith Jones, I want you to come to my cookout at the end of the year." And I was like, "Oh, gosh, I live in Virginia Beach, I won't be here." And he said, "Oh, no." Then his mom called and said, "Well, we'd like to invite you to his bar mitzvah." And of course, I didn't know what a bar mitzvah was. I Googled it, and they sent me this wonderful, beautiful invitation. And the young man would always come up to me and say, "Ms. Smith Jones, don't forget that my mom sent you the invitation." So, building that relationship was very interesting. And when I got back to school this year in September, I said, "I have to," in August, I'm sorry, I said, "I have to remember to get there. What am I going to wear? What am I going to do?" I knew it was a religious ceremony. And some people would tell me that it has to be something very special for someone to invite you to that. This was a young man that I connected with during the time that he would come after school every day. I don't think he missed any sessions. Actually, we had several students have perfect attendance, believe it or not. Twenty-some-odd sessions of the drone engineering. But it was so important to me that I would attend this. All summer long, I was thinking about it. I had to make sure I got there for him. Because when I got there, just the ceremony itself, when it was saying it's about building community, it's about schools, making connection with children and with family, I found this relationship, and I think I got a lot out of it, just as much as the students from the drone engineering and the STEM program after school. So, this young man, Adam, and I, you know, he sees me in the hallway. He's so excited. I see his mom. His mom was at our open house the other night. But I never thought I would build a relationship like that with a young man and have a religious experience that would build on me, a culture experience as well, from a program like this after school. So, it's really important that we bring the community into our schools, because we never know what's going to happen. And I'm so glad to be the sponsor of the Future Kings and to continue on this year. So, thank you for the opportunity.
So, it's always, it's always nice when someone else says something good about you. So, my presentation? Okay. So, now I'd like to give you a quick overview of the Future Kings operation. We are open to everybody, but we're not for everyone. What that means is that, I was telling you before about, we have both a Saturday program and an after-school program. And so, and most of this presentation today is about the Saturday program. And so, when we say that we're open for everyone, but not for everyone, our meetings start at nine o'clock on Saturday morning. And there's a lot of kids who don't want to get up at nine o'clock on Saturday morning to go to anything. And so, they're not the ones that we are reaching out to. The opportunity is there, and they are certainly welcome to become members at any time. Is that something I'm doing, making it flash? Okay. So, but everyone doesn't want to do it. Also, in our Saturday program, we have certain expectations. We have expectations about how they're supposed to act during the school day. So, someone, we've had a number of success cases where someone joined Future Kings even though they were a behavior problem during a regular school day. But because of the guidance that we gave them and the support that we gave them on changing that behavior, that they became very positive students during the school day. So, that type of transition from being a problem to being a success is part of what we're trying to build. And so, if we have a student who is not meeting our performance expectations, then we separate them from the program. If it's important to us that the students that are with us represent us well. And so, we work with them very, very diligently and for an extended period of time. But sometimes, people just don't want to change. And for those types of people, that we'll separate them until they do decide that they want to change. But our goal is to create pipelines of talent into emerging technologies. We do support the career goals of our participants. We support the entrepreneurial goals of participants, and we support special interests of Future Kings participants. I have been in private industry, and I have a lot of friends who are still in private industries. And so, my network becomes their network. If someone or a student in one of our programs wants to do a certain type of entrepreneurial project or his career aspect, career aspirations in certain areas, that we will support that. Kevin and Alexis, that were just here, both want to, they know where they'd like to go. And one of the things that will happen in Future Kings, if they're part of the Saturday program, is that we will connect them with a doctor who can help mentor them. We'll connect them with someone who is a pilot or is around pilots, so they get that mentoring and they get that support. And then, we have people who have special interests. We've helped people who had an interest in photography, who had interest in videography, who have interest in all types of other things that are not in our core. But we support those by finding mentors and other support staff to help them. Our organization, as I've said before, has a Saturday program, has an after-school program, and we also are part of the National Society of Black Engineers program. So, if you know anything about the National Society of Black Engineers, they have a whole host of companies and other organizations that are providing assets that will help students anywhere from third grade to post-college. And so, we are an active member and have our own active chapter of the Nesbitt Junior. The way that we create this pipeline is described on this slide. On the left-hand side, you can see that we work with school districts and building personnel. So, the example here is that we did an outreach to Dr. Newman, but we also now have worked with Betsy English Whitaker at Osborne, as well as Ms. Sandra Smith Jones at Metz. Those examples of building personnel that we will work with. We have a number of corporate and public partners that will also feed into what we're trying to do. And as I said a while ago, parents are a very integral part of our input. In the center, you'll see those, what I call them, are silos. Drone engineering is one of the technical skills that we're training, computer game design, biomedical sciences, and cybersecurity. And we're now in the process of working with AWS on a artificial intelligence specialty. Our kids, our graduates, as you saw in one of the previous slides, typically go on to post-secondary education. If not for one year, then for their entire, until they graduate. And often, they also get jobs. And we have more than one of our graduates who both go to Northern Virginia Community College right after, as they graduate, and then also work at a job. So, we definitely support that. And you'll see that some of these schools where our students are going to right now are Yale, Johns Hopkins, Virginia Commonwealth, and the list is on the right-hand side of that screen. And this is all part of the methodology we use to create this talent pipeline. And this is all part of the methodology we use to create this talent pipeline into a number of emerging technology areas. So the Future Kings Saturday program is located at Nova Manassas. We've been at Nova Woodbridge since 2014. And this year, for the first year, we'll be at Nova Manassas. We'll be providing the technical training there, the 21st Century Skills program there. We'll be going on field trips. Those field trips will be college tours, places of business, airport hangars, but we'll be going, airport simulators. But we'll be doing a number of things like that. And then the speakers that we'll bring in are also very accomplished. One of the speakers that we had last year and will be back this year is a retired executive from Motown. He was also a senior executive at Epic Records and he's done a lot of other things at high level. One of the speakers that we had last year was the Surgeon General of the United States Army. And these, and we have another speaker who is in charge of pre-K animation for Netflix. And these are all people who are in our orbit. And so it's part of the network that we help create for the people in our program, that they get to meet these types of very successful people. And then all these people who they meet always invite our participants to become part of that person's network. And they reach out and they offer the students the opportunity to stay in touch and often our students do. It's just, it lists some of our corporate sponsors. You see that we have Manassas City Public Schools now that we list as one of our sponsors, but Micron is also there, George Mason, Nova, of course. And so we are reasonably active and do have some high-quality supporters and they are part of the backbone of what we're doing. We have some special memberships. We are a member of AWS Academy. The AWS Academy is really targeted at higher ed institutions. I believe we might be the only K-12-type organization that's been accepted in AWS Academy. Unity is a high-end computer game design platform done by professionals. And a lot of the movies that you see that have significant special effects, those special effects are often done using Unity software. CompTIA is a recognized leader in cybersecurity and other information technology fields. And we have, we're an authorized partner with them. And so these were the four silos that we built on, the cybersecurity, computer game design, biomedical sciences, and drone engineering. And for each one of those, we're teaching college-level skills to people who enter our program. And that is one of the key components on how we are preparing our young men for a competitive, to have a competitive advantage once they graduate from high school. And as mentioned before, these are some of the schools where are, that we currently have people. We have other schools where we've had students who were there that have left that school, but currently we have alumni in all the schools on that sheet. We always point out, we always love to point out Yale and Johns Hopkins. So what's the problem that we're really trying to solve? And that's one of the things that we really wanted to reach out about. So there's an acknowledged need for more students to enter STEM fields. And we think that we have a methodology that will allow us to help fill that need. We believe that there are hidden geniuses from underserved communities and that these hidden geniuses can be a tremendous support for meeting that need for more STEM students. And so we take it upon ourselves to develop programs that both identify and then nurture these hidden geniuses, so they can be the pipeline of additional STEM professionals, that they can be part of the solution for closing the opportunity gap and the economic But one of the situations that we're also trying to solve is, we recognize that there are leaks, that there are leaks in the STEM diversity platform. And although a lot of us talk about wanting to do something, still, we're working very, all of us are working very diligently at trying to both acknowledge those leaks and also try and find ways to plug the leaks. And we believe that Future Kings in partnership with Manassas City Public Schools can be one of the tools to help plug those leaks. There are a number of reasons why those leaks exist and I won't try to delve too much into it, but I would say that in general, our experience has been that these leaks can fall into three major areas. One is just low expectations. Another one is that, that I believe, is that there are certain gateway courses in K-12 that wind up having people, having students deselect themselves from careers in STEM. And then finally, I think that there are lots of weaknesses in the knowledge transfer between teachers or adults in general and students in this age group. If you watch the way that adults speak to kids in a lot of ways, it's much different than the way that kids speak to themselves. And as part of that knowledge transfer, it's important for us to try to reach the students where they are. And so rather than delve too far into that, I'm just saying that those are some of the things that we've designed our program around, to make sure that that knowledge transfer between people who know and people who don't know is done in a way that is most effective for the students that we're trying to reach. Our vision is to introduce STEM professionals, engage the environment to a thousand young men from underserved communities each year. Obviously, they're not all going to come from Manassas City Public Schools, but we're going to continue working on that. We want to build and maximize our relationship with Manassas City Public Schools, go as far as we can, get as many young men as we can into our Saturday program. And maybe it will be a thousand, but, and if it's not, we can continue to work hard and continue to build on the number of people who are in the program. And that will, I think, really, really help us in meeting our goals. And here's the reward. The reward is discovery of a number of hidden geniuses with advanced skills that are preparing them for life. Students who are well-prepared for life after high school. So what are the next steps? Well, Future Kings right now are moving and we like our partnership with Manassas City Public Schools to help moving from STEM-specific programs into what we call, where it's called STEM literacy program. As the slide mentions, STEM-specific just means that you're preparing students to fill a particular job. For example, you might be teaching them how to become a lab technician. And so that is a certain STEM-specific type of program. On the other hand, STEM literacy just means that they learn how to use STEM in order to both satisfy a broad range, but more likely, more importantly, to apply STEM to solutions. This is a better statement. The STEM scientific approach, the STEM-literate student will know how to use a scientific approach to observe and interpret the world, use technology to serve as a tool, to solve programs or reach a goal, to know how to engineer, test, solve problems through creation of products or processes, and importantly, use math to help quantify, comprehend, and evaluate the problem and solution's success. Our four STEM silos, if you will, are all meant to do that using different types of STEM platforms. And so we're not teaching our cybersecurity students, for example, to, for a specific job in cybersecurity. We're teaching them to understand the technology involved in cybersecurity because there are a zillion different jobs in the cybersecurity field. We don't know which one is going to be the most attractive to that student. But if they have a broad range of flexibility and knowledges, then they can use that training that they get in the cybersecurity field to a number of technologies, whether it be in cybersecurity or outside of cybersecurity. That's what we mean by STEM literacy. And so our Future Kings work is aligned towards STEM literacy. Our graduates are demonstrating the knowledge and skills and experiences and attributes to be successful in college. The young men on this slide are all current members of Future Kings. One of them is a student here, another student from Manassas City Public Schools. The one in the bottom right is a student at Osborne High School. But one of our activities is we have a scholarship gala each year. And it's a formal event and participants in Future Kings speak and actually plan and operate the gala. And this is an example of what they dress like when they come to that gala. And so we, they all, each one of these on this slide has had a, has had a significant role in conducting our gala and they all have been very strong leaders in our program. So as we get closer in, how can Future Kings support Manassas City Public Schools? Well, the first thing we like to do is supplement the STEM curriculum within your schools. The after-school, our STEM academy can help with that. The STEM training that will be given in our Saturday program can obviously be brought back into the school day activities, but we believe that the programs that we have can easily supplement what you're already doing in the STEM field. Another thing that we want to do is to help create more STEM-literate students. And so we can work for you and partner with you on the ideas of both the, for gaining STEM literacy. We want to help close the equity gap in STEM careers. And we think that that type of partnership and collaboration with you is one of the ways that we can help close that equity gap in STEM careers. And then finally, we want to help you increase the competitive advantage that your students have over their peers when they graduate. In a perfect world, the training and advantage that we're providing to students who are in our Future Kings Saturday program can be spread throughout Manassas City Public Schools as a, not as a replacement, but as a collaboration, as an extension of what you're already doing. We know that during the school day, there's so many things that you are teaching students about that we'll never get to it. But we also know that there are things that we're doing that will be difficult for you to get to. And so the basis of the partnership is that we could really design and develop ways that uses the greatest assets from each side into solutions that benefit the students that we're trying to serve. So specifically, what we like to do is build, and what I just said, develop tempted processes for both, for increasing the intensity between Future Kings and Manassas City Public Schools. Part of that intensity is going to be just a extended outreach into the community. In the beginning, I was saying that Meg Carroll from Georgetown South was the first person I talked to and she was the impetus to come to make contact with Manassas City Public Schools. But we can do that in a number of other areas as well, where we are contacting parents and students who normally let their, let their involvement in school end at the end of the school day and then help them to want to do more with what they're learning during the school day and help them to do, and give them more of a, of a career entry, entry to change the trajectory, the trajectory of their, of what they believe their career can be. And we like to increase enrollment in our Saturday program as another one of the specific next steps. And then increase the offering and enrollment in the after-school program. So we think those four things can be done right away and they're well within reach. And I think that there would be excellent incentives and can really help advance the ball in the partnership. So again, this is, I'm Dr. Eric King. For our Manassas campus, we have what we call a principal in, and so he'll be, that's Mr. Ruben Brown, and he will be leading our Manassas campus to be building on the things that we have been doing in Future Kings for the last, since 2009. And with that, if you have any questions for me, I'll answer them, otherwise I'll...
Any questions or comments from the board?
I have a comment.
This is Brooks.
This is amazing. Thank you for all of the work that all of you are doing in our community, in our extended community, for our children. Thank you so much for bringing this to us and them.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Brown, for presenting this afternoon. It was great to learn more about Future Kings. I heard of you and I kind of knew a little bit what's going on, but it's great to get a bigger picture about all the involvement that you have and we appreciate your partnership. Thank you to Ms. Smith Jones, thank you to Kevin and Alexis in the back. We look forward to seeing great things that you're doing. And Mr. Ruben Brown, thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you.
We had some questions.
Oh, Jill, did you have a question?
I did, I had a couple of questions. Is there a fee to participate in Future Kings?
Yes. We, it's $100 per year.
Okay.
And they, it doesn't cover the expenses.
Sure.
Okay. But it is $100 per year.
Okay, so it's $100 per year and parental, a parental promise to participate?
We don't even, we don't even do that. We encourage the parents, we made a commitment early on that we were never going to punish a student for what a parent would or would not do.
Okay.
So as long as, sometimes all the parents do is just bring their child to our program. We try and get them to do more, but no, if a parent doesn't participate, it's not, it's okay.
Okay, so it's $100 for the Saturday program?
Yes.
Or the after-school program?
The Saturday program.
The Saturday program, okay. And can you, when you go, do you do all four pillars? Is that the experience and then they figure out what they like? Or when, once they, once they know that they're, they want to be a pilot, do they just do the aviation program?
The Saturday program is broken up into two sections. The first part is where we do the 21st Century Skills and all of the networking with the practicing professionals. The second part is where we do the technical skills. And each participant chooses one of those four for his technical training.
Okay. So it's sort of the broader experience and then it narrows down. So is it really a two-year program?
It's actually, it's actually designed as a seven-year program. In a perfect world...
Right.
They come in as sixth graders.
Sure.
And I was saying before that we have, it's a multi-year, multi-step process.
Okay.
And so Level 1 is designed for sixth graders. Everyone that comes in starts at Level 1, but they can progress as quickly as they want and we give a lot of supports to help them. So, and so our curriculum for the Saturday program is broken up into seven different levels. And since we have about 20 meetings per year, then each of those levels is broken up into 20 different steps.
Right, okay, that's, that's major. So thank you for that. If you wanted to become involved in Future Kings as a freshman in high school, would you would still start at Level 1?
Yes, but there'd be...
Or is that allowed?
Yes, and, but you could, you could advance. And that happens a lot. We have people who join us in their junior year, okay? And, and they don't know as much as someone who's been there for five years, but they do know enough to get started and then we help them to get caught up. So they, they never really... So they, they never really feel like they're out of place. If you come to one of our meetings, there's two things that are going on in the meeting that you would never recognize. Number one is we have a broad spectrum of experiences and length of time in Future Kings. And by looking at the interaction, you wouldn't necessarily know that. And then the second thing is we have a broad spectrum of, of school day labels. If you look at, we have people who are labeled special needs during their day, working right next to people who are labeled talented and gifted. And you watch them work together and you can't tell which one is special needs and which one is not. You can't tell who's new to your program and who's not because they're all doing the same thing at their own ability level.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thanks again, Dr. King.
You're welcome.
Do you know what days the Osborne group is meeting, after-school?
No. I know that, I know that we have, I think Osborne is Monday and Wednesday. And I think that Metz is Tuesday and Thursday. I can't tell you which day is computer game design and which day is drone engineering.
I just thought I'd stop by sometimes.
Okay, Monday, Wednesday, I think at Osborne and Tuesday, Thursday at Metz.
Okay, Tuesday, Thursday, okay. Very good. Thank you so much for coming tonight.
Thank you. I'll leave then.
Thank you. Okay, that will, that concludes our superintendent spotlights for this evening. Moving on to board committee reports. And we have none this evening. Will take us to citizens' comments.
Sorry, I'm happy to report there's an educational support meeting coming up 9:27. That'll be the next, before our next school board meeting.
At what time and where?
Prior to the meeting, in this building at 5:00 PM.
Gotcha. Thank you very much. Citizens' comments. At this time, we welcome citizens who wish to speak about services, policies, and affairs of the Manassas City Public Schools. Because we have an agenda we need to complete, we ask that comments be limited to three minutes. We appreciate the time you have taken to be here. We treat citizens' comments as a public hearing and we do not engage in conversation with speakers. The lack of an immediate response to your comments should not be taken as a lack of interest or concern. Please be respectful when presenting your comments. Do you have a list? Alex, can you grab the sheet down there? Mrs. Steinbach.
There we go. All right. All right, well, hello. All right. I'll try not to be emotional about this one, but this hit home. So, what I want to ask you guys and what I want to say to you has to do with our high school kids.
Could you move your microphone a little closer? I just want to make sure I hear everything.
You said I might be a little emotional about this because this hit home. What I would like to ask you and say to you has to do with our high school kids. Okay, and the safety of our students. I would like to know, why are the high school students allowed, this is Osborne High School, why are they allowed to leave the campus? Why are they allowed to loiter around the Manassas Museum? And the reason I ask is today at around 2:45, as I dropped my son off, as he's at the George Mason, and I dropped him off at school to finish his Block Four, as I was leaving, okay, I'm seeing kids hang out across the museum. About 10 kids. As I see the security officer leaving, not stopping, not asking these kids, what are you doing there? You're just hanging out. You're not doing anything. Now, there are also, as I took my kids to the playground to wait for my kids to get out of school, there are kids in these, in a kid's playground, hanging out in the tunnels doing god knows what. Actually, I can just imagine that, what they're doing. But then I see five more kids go into the wooded area behind the playground as they leave their garbage on the ground. Not one student returned to Osborne. Now, with yesterday's rumor, okay, about gun violence at Osborne, being that my son had to tell me at lunch about what was going on. And the first thing I did was tell my husband, who was in a very important meeting. And the next thing we do is pray for our kids. Okay, my kid is at lunch. My daughter, who has anxiety issues, thankfully, did not know what was going on because this would have hit her hard. Now, how are you keeping our kids safe when you allow high schoolers to leave the building? And correct me if I'm wrong, okay, but Osborne High School is a school. These kids should not be leaving the building. They should be in the school from 8:20 to 3:20 in the afternoon, learning. Okay, this is not a hangout time to go across the street, to go into the woods. You claim to care about the students, you claim to care about their safety. I'm not seeing it. Okay, I'm just not. And that's only one out of the many issues I have with this school board and with all the schools. And I remember, Mr. Newman, my husband thinks highly of you. Me, not so much. Last time you talked about a naysayers, okay? This was back when we were at City Hall. I'm going to tell you, I'm one of the biggest naysayers there is because each of my children have gone to every single school and I have had a problem with every single school. But for right now, we're going to talk about these kids and their safety. Because if there is a threat of gun violence, how are you keeping these kids that you allow out? To hang out, how are you keeping them safe?
Ms. Steinbach, that's three minutes. Did you have anything else you need to say?
No, that's it.
Next up is the consent agenda. Can I have a motion, please?
Chair, I'd like to move that the school board of the city in Manassas approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Stevens, second by Mrs. Brooks, that the school board, the city of Manassas, approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries six zero. Next up on the discussion agenda, we have our 2022-2023 School Crisis Plan Update.
Good evening. Chair Seberg, Vice Chair Stevens, Dr. Newman, and other board members. I would like to inform you that the Manassas City School Crisis Emergency Management and Medical Response Plans are in accordance with the Code of Virginia 22.1-279.8. Today, I have Mr. Jordan. He is our supervisor of risk management and safety. And he will be here to support any additional questions and answers that you might have about our plans and our protocol. The template that we use for our crisis plan was a template that was developed by the Department of Criminal Justice after discussions with members of the Department of the Homeland Security, the FBI, the CIA, the Chief of Police Association, and the Superintendents Association on how to deal with diverse situations based on their experiences. The crisis plans contains several procedures to prevent, respond to a critical event or emergencies, including all of the following: natural disasters, loss or disruption of power, bus or other accidents, medical emergencies, student or staff member deaths, explosions, bomb threats, gun, knife, or other weapon threats, spills or exposures to hazardous substances, the presence of unauthorized persons or trespassers on our campuses, the loss, disappearance, or kidnapping of a student, hostage situations, violence on school property and/or at school activities, incidents involving acts of terrorism, and other incidents posing a serious threat to harm students, personnel, and our facilities. We have a division-level crisis team, which is also our executive cabinet members, to include the superintendent, the executive director of student services, director, executive director of student achievement, human resources, director of finance operations, director of public communications, our emergency manager, director of facilities maintenance, director of transportation, and our director of information technology services. And as I stated, this is our executive cabinet. Our future meetings, our team meeting, our team will meet during the month of September. Our safety coordinator crisis plan team meetings, Mr. Jordan, Jordan here, he meets with the school safety coordinators. And at the school level, the expectation is that the crisis team meets at least once a semester as a minimum. So that's two times per year, although we have several schools that meet on a monthly basis and more often. We have additional crisis plan team members or outside agencies that have assisted and that are aware of our crisis plans, to include the Manassas City Fire and Rescue Department, the City, Manassas City Police, City Emergency Management, Department of Family Services, the Virginia Center for School and Campus Safety, Prince William County Health Department, and Prince William County Community Services Board, and the American Red Cross. Our school safety inspection checklist is due every three years. Also, the division gets inspected by our fire marshal once a year and by VA Corp., which is our insurance company, once a year to provide a safety assessment. At the building level, there is a crisis response team, or CRT. They meet at least twice per year and it's usually led by the principal or the principal's designated. During this crisis team meeting, they review the crisis plan. They conduct training, pre-planning for emergencies. And they also continue to talk about how to communicate the contents of the plan with the staff members. I have also included our drill conducted ledger. This is monitored every month by Mr. Jordan and myself to ensure that all of these drills are up to date. As you can see, they are broken out by expectations per month. We have already had our first lockdown drill for the school year at all schools. And then we're now into September where there's one fire drill that is required. And as you can see, I have listed all of the required drills for our safety that are also included in our plan. Our facilities, just an update on some of the things that we have done in our facilities. Our facilities have enhanced the safety of the HVAC system by adding more efficient air filters, increased the flow of outside air, and added the UV towers in the classroom to reduce virus. Many gallons of hand sanitizer were distributed to the schools. All light bulbs in the building have been replaced for LED lights to enhance the clarity inside the classrooms and in the hallways. All the buildings were updated with larger signs on all of the outside door numbers to facilitate first responders arriving at the schools. The city of Manassas has helped by providing updated signs on all the school playgrounds, informing citizens not to use during school hours. Our facilities are in the process of replacing and updating the go-bags of every classroom to include a trauma pack. A trauma pack will enhance the ability to reduce bleeding and gain life-saving time. The plan update. All crisis plans are updated every year with current information. The Department of Criminal Justice provides us with the latest advice on best practices and they give, and we get information on trends. And therefore, when we get that information, the Manassas City Public Schools has, we've been implementing the option, options-based approach. The staff has been presented with the model of run, hide, or fight, or in other words, avoid, deny, defend. There's a new idea, this is a new idea that is being introduced to the process named hold. This vocabulary will need to be introduced and explained to the, explained to the schools in order to be uniform throughout the Commonwealth. Do we have any questions at this time about our crisis plans?
Any questions from the board? Mrs. Stevens?
So, I know we have to move around the camera. It's kind of right in front of me.
I can see you, yes, ma'am.
So if we look at slide, thank you for the presentation. It was quite timely. If we look at slide number four, when it talks about types of crises continued.
Yes.
One of the ones it talks about gun, knife, or other weapons threats.
Yes.
Is that something that, did the crisis team deal with that yesterday? What is the protocol?
So I don't, okay, so I don't want to, so yesterday, we did implement the plan as there were rumors and there were no, no fact in whatever was found for the outside community. So we did respond. We did use the plan. Everyone was clear as to the steps that needed to be taken. All students were safe. So I believe to answer your question, we did implement the plan. All students were safe. There was a rumor of a threat and we handled that accordingly to the plan. Did that answer?
I think so.
You're asking, did we use the plan? And we, and we did implement the plan. However, there was no threat in the building. And I was in the building at the time and it was just, it was a rumor at the time.
And so then after something like this, I would assume the team debriefs and looks at next steps or in another situation going forward?
We did. We met at nine o'clock this morning, from nine until 12, actually. And we did meet immediately to debrief, discuss a plan of action going forward to mitigate some of the things that we saw yesterday. So something, we responded immediately and we did meet today. And that's usually the practice, that if there is a threat or some type of crisis, whether it is factual or not, that we will meet and debrief, go through our plan to ensure that if there is ever a real case, that we will be able to ensure that all students are safe. All students, staff, and staff as well are safe.
And then after an event like this, do you, I'm trying to think of the best way to ask. Do you ensure that those individuals who are emotionally impacted by something, whether it was, whether it was unfounded, founded, whatever the case may be, do you ensure that they have additional access to resources to deal with the emotional after effects?
Yes, so I will write that down to ensure that I can speak on that for all schools. But speaking of yesterday, I did witness the counselors on hand during our meeting today. All of the APs and the principals said that they addressed every student. They addressed every parent. They referred, called every parent who had called in with concerns. I am very sure that that took place. However, when I report to you in the future, I will be able to say, without a shadow of a doubt, that we will have those resources on, on, on hand for students who are emotionally fragile. However, yesterday, I do know that the Osborne staff did an outstanding job talking to students. I was there witnessing students coming up to the officers and Mr. Flugrav with concerns. They were very comfortable in expressing their concerns and their concerns were not ignored. So I do know that they responded to our fragile, our emotionally fragile or just students who were upset or pretty scared about the threat that was heightened just through students heightened. But it wasn't factual as to what was going on. But yes, they did respond to students on an emotional level.
Okay. I don't know if this is something that can be done in the future. Is there a way for parents to have a resource? Because I, you know, we all got the email yesterday.
Right.
Is there a way for parents to have a resource where they can call, they can email to say, hey, you know, my kid's really uncomfortable with coming back to school tomorrow? Because they know we were getting emails yesterday and I haven't checked my emails in today. But parents were really fearful and.
Absolutely.
I, always in situations like this, there are about 20 different stories that go around.
Absolutely.
And, you know, as a parent myself, who's, who's had kids go through it. And, you know, as a parent myself, who's, who's had kids go through it, it's very hard for a parent to differentiate what is and what is not, and what can be done going forward.
So as a team, as on the division level, I think that would be something that we can thoroughly discuss in our meeting in September. I can briefly say one idea that I have, that maybe we can have a hotline when, in crises, where a parent can call in and get live information. We would just have to figure out what staff personnel would be there to answer phones. But I'm sure they were calling the front office and getting information.
Okay. Yeah, because I know, in emails yesterday, I did refer parents to the counseling department.
Right.
So, yes. Then on slide 11, can you, it says, you know, Department of Criminal Justice provide the latest advice on best practices as they get information on trends. MCPS has been implementing the options-based approach. Can you share what an options-based approach is?
Absolutely. We were ready for that one. Mr. Jordan? I, I can do it, but I think he does it best, okay?
Mr. Jordan? Well, we already know what slides. You go ahead.
So.
Close it to the mic.
So in years past, if you recall what happened at Columbine, the students at that, the students and staff at that location had one option to do, and what they chose to do, or were told to do, was to hide. Hide on their desk, separate, and that was the only option that they had at that time. And it took a long time for the offenders to locate those people and cause a lot of harm. Ever since that day, police departments and the superintendent's offices and everybody has been working together to find a better way. And what we are using at this time, and I'm not saying it's the only option, is option-based. And we are telling every school, every school member, every staff, every student, that they have options. It's not only hide. We are working to provide information in our plans to help them make a better decision. If they want to run, it will be okay to run away from the building. Save yourself, save others. If you don't have a, you will also be supported if you decide to hide. And if, when you decide to hide, how to make sure that you increase your opportunity to save your life by enhancing the barrier, you know, your hiding place, barricading the doors, being prepared to, if the offender comes to you, to, you will have also the option to fight for your life if you choose to. So those are the ideas that we are trying to pass on to every staff member and the students to, so they can make better decisions, that decisions or plans that were not offered in years past. So they have, from now on, the opportunity to make different decisions and.
Based on the scenario?
Based, based on the scenario that they are living.
Thank you. How are we providing that information to staff and students?
So the crisis response teams, hopefully, and I will follow up per month with the principals now that the crisis plans have been submitted for our review. And Mr. Jordan and I, we're going through the plans and making sure that they're accurate and they're up to date. So to disseminate the information and to inform the staff, they do those during their staff meetings. So they have a crisis response team, and then they give the information to their, to their staff members during a staff meeting. However, you know, we have the ledger, so we do know that they're doing the lockdown drills. So we have to inform them how to do the lockdown drills. So that's how you know those things are taking place, because they're communicating, these are the drills, this is the protocol, and this is what we do. A further step to answer your question is that during the staff meeting, I will make sure that I ensure that all of those other crises that's listed in our plan, that staff members are kept abreast. Traditionally, the staff members know where the crisis plans are, there should be some, some copies of the crisis plan for everyone to have readily available to kind of go through just the protocol if, if there's ever a crisis. However, sometimes we don't have that time, but we should be very knowledgeable about how to respond to a crisis.
Okay. Uh, thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
I have a couple.
Thank you for being here tonight. We appreciate your sharing the crisis plan. Can I ask, what is the addition of the "hold" option, did you say?
The whole, you know, that's the new one, the new vocabulary, okay.
So, I'm sorry. So I just participated in a conference in Hampton this summer, and they introduced this new concept of "hold." And the person that did the, the presentation was the co-founder of the I Love You Foundation, and he is working with the GAS on, we call it a living plan. We are not going to stay, you know, where we were if we find something better to do or how to. So he entered, he's helping us, his foundation introduced this new concept of "hold." What they do with this concept is will be an announcement from, in the PA saying, "Hold. Hold what you have." So what we are going to be asking the students and staff is to, in a minimal safety level, will be stay in your classroom. You can go to the bathroom, or you go in the bathroom, but return to your classroom. There's no rush to come back, there's no emergency. What we want is at, on that term of "hold," is to clear the hallways, because there is something happening in the school that we may need an ambulance to come and pass with our gurney, and they don't want people in the hallway. You know, a student passing out, a teacher, something that keep the, the hallways clear. But if you need to go to the bathroom, go to the office, one person goes, but immediately returns to the classroom. So minimal, minimal in, presentation for, for emergency.
So it's kind of a lesser version of a lockdown.
Lockdown. I would call it, "Hold, secure the building, lockdown."
Okay. In an effort to try to address loitering, can you help, is there anything that you can share with us that may have been changed since the beginning of the year regarding any patrols that you're doing or anything that's happening around Osborne High School?
Yes, I am and will be meeting with Sergeant Stump very, very soon to go over our crisis plans, to talk about some safety issues and some patrol issues. And they have been a wonderful partnership with us, and so we're just strengthening the partnership. We're in constant communication, but just to talk about some of the concerns, just with the, you know, with the leaving the camp, campus and things of the sort. So yes, we will have a plan in place for that. Already on it. So we will be meeting, meeting very soon, and I should have an update for you, the outcomes and the next steps from that meeting.
I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
I know I'm trying to, you know, conflate two things, but I know personally, I've been back to the playground behind the museum since the beginning of the year and seen police presence back there. So at least once, I know that I've seen personally with my own eyes. One last question is just with this crisis plan.
Yes.
This is being shared with, this is being shared with staff, or at the high school level, are students also being offered options of run, fight, hide, hold?
Do you know about the students of Osborne?
So yes, the crisis team is available for any staff member to, if they have concerns about specific questions that they have. So the safety, the security officers are well-informed of the crisis plans, so the teachers can go and approach the safety officers, and they will be instructed. If they don't know the answer, they will go to the next level. Same with the students. The students are being instructed on how to, the idea of run, hide, fight, or defend, or.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Hollingsworth?
I have no questions. Just a statement. I was home yesterday when I heard, I got phone calls of the rumor, and I'm a parent as well, and I'm fearful too. I immediately jumped in my car and drove to Osborne and saw that the story wasn't consistent. Today, I went over to Osborne to visit Mr. Flugrath, and the atmosphere was great. But I am still a parent, and I am still concerned, and I empathize with all parents who are worried. These are things that we can't foresee, or they're, we're left to react. We've done a lot of planning, but I'm interested in preventive measures. I'm interested in ways to help prevent not only something like that to actually happen, but I'm also interested in ways as a community we can communicate without spreading rumors so quickly. So those are two, it's a, it's a two-head monster to fight. And so I just wanted to say to the parents in the community that I empathize with you. I was fearful too. I still am, I'm concerned. And again, I think as a board, we're going to work a little bit to support Mr. Flugrath and some preventive measures to help in some of these issues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hollingsworth. Dr. Newman, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's important to note that the specific details of the crisis plan is not publicized, and that's to protect the integrity of the plan and the safety for our staff and our students. Is that correct?
That is correct.
That is correct.
And Dr. Thomas, you've answered all my questions, every single one. I had like eight.
Uh-oh.
And you got them all. So thank you very much for your presentation. Any final comments or, okay.
And I will continue to follow up on our plan and the measures that we're taking, the preventative measures and the things that we're doing, just to keep you abreast on what's going on.
We appreciate that.
Absolutely. Thank you, my pleasure.
I did want to say thank you and great job.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jordan.
Next up on our agenda is a discussion, finance and operations, our 2223 building rental fees. And we do have a fee scheduled before us tonight. And I believe that this has been discussed in committee before for our joint, joint board committee, joint facility committee. Yeah, did Mrs. Spall or Mr. Hollingsworth, do you have anything that you want to add about what was discussed?
Absolutely. We met on September 7th to discuss the rental rate of our fields, and our objective at the end of the meeting, we're trying to get the rate to be competitive with the surrounding schools in the area. Good.
That's good.
That's all I have to.
And it's, it's not just fields too, it's, it's building space, it's cafeterias, it could be the parking lot, it could be any of our properties that we rent out. So that's important to note. Is there any other questions from the board about these fees? We don't need to prove this tonight, right? If Carrie's forward, we'll prove it at a future meeting? Very good. Any other questions or concerns or anything? I think it's important to be competitive with our surrounding jurisdictions, because we do want it to be fair, and they are public buildings. So this is a way that we can offer that and, and still be able to protect our property and support the staff, the maintenance, and the, the facility cleanup and all that, so. If there's nothing further, I'll move along on the agenda. Board members' comments. Mr. Beepe, do you have any comments this evening?
Yes, I do. Good evening, everyone, everyone who's joined us for this meeting today. Before I make this statement, I just wanted to make it clear, this is in no way a response to the citizens' comments that were made today. This was something I had planned to say prior to that happening. Something that I wanted to speak on were in relation to the, I guess you could call them the events that have been taking place at Osborne as of recently. And I just wanted to state that as a student, and especially as a student representative, it can be somewhat, somewhat irritating at times to know that people like our principal, Mr. Flugrath, and other levels of administration have to deal with the aftermath of things. And while they are supposed to deal with the aftermath of things, sometimes it can be irritating knowing that there are certain individuals making the situation a lot worse, and knowing that there are rumors being spread, people not knowing certain levels of information and just saying it just to say it. And so I just wanted to say that one thing that we have to keep in mind is that we can't expect Osborne or anywhere in Manassas City Public Schools to have a positive connotation if we are adding to the problem. I wanted to make that clear just to students, teachers, parents, any other forms of administration, because we can't get better if we don't do better as a whole. So that was just something I wanted to state tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Beepe. Ms. Island?
I wanted to piggyback off of what Mr. Beepe said. A lot of the students heard, like through the grape chain, like through the chain, about the rumor, about what happened, with the, with the rumor. And a lot of people were spreading it around, thinking that it was true, when it wasn't. We didn't know what was happening at the time. A lot of kids were scared, some kids left. A lot of kids were really anxious about the whole entire thing, the whole entire ordeal, and they didn't want to like, they didn't want to stay at school, because they were scared for their safety. And they were talking to their parents about what has, about what had happened. Again, we all, a lot of the students contributed to that because they thought that was a fact when it was not, and they were really scared in that time, and a lot of parents are scared too, which I completely understand. And a lot of the, the school board members and the principal was also scared, because what happened, the rumor that was spread, was a very scary rumor that not all of us knew how to comprehend or how to deal with. And that's just what I wanted to say.
Thank you, Ms. Island. Mr. Hollingsworth?
I just want to thank everyone who did a presentation today, Future Kings, Sounds Great, Dr. Thompson, Thomas, even our citizen comments. Thank you. We appreciate hearing from you and sharing your concerns. And again, I just want to thank everybody for participating tonight.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Brooks?
Yes, thank you. I also want to piggyback on everybody's comments of how important it is for us to keep each other safe by also not just jumping to conclusions. I want to thank Future Kings for, again, for everything that they are providing, and to our, you know, school crisis plan, Dr. Thomas and your staff, thank you so much for all that you're doing to ensure the safety of our students and our staff and our community, because, you know, you're, you're the, that's, that's where we go when, you know, things that are scary happen. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Brooks. Mr. Irkball?
Yeah, thank you. I just want to thank everyone for their presentations tonight as well. I want to thank Future Kings for their presentation. You know, it's really great that we have something like Future Kings, a program like that in our schools. Some of the technologies that they were mentioning, like AWS and Unity, I mean, that's stuff that I saw firsthand and experienced during my senior year of college. So the fact that they're exposing kids to things like that at a young age is really good, and that's just what we need in our city to promote STEM. So I'm really excited to work with them in the future. And I also just want to say in regards to school safety, I just appreciate hearing the insights of everyone here tonight, our student representatives, citizens' comments, and other members of the board. And I know that we take these things very seriously, and I just, I also want to say that I trust in us as a governance team and our staff in order to mitigate future problems. And you're not alone in your, in your worry. I know personally, I also had a member of my family that was in the building at the time of the incident, and I understand your fear. But again, I really do trust in our team and our staff to mitigate these problems as they come. Thank you.
Mrs. Spall?
Yes, I'd like to thank Dr. Thomas for the crisis plan update, Future Kings, and specifically Mrs. Smith Jones for her relationship-building experiences that she shared, Mr. Beepe and Ms. Island for giving us an insider's account of what happened yesterday, or what they felt about yesterday. Just a couple of community-related things. I, I know that VRE is free for the month of September, so if anybody... VRE is free for the month of September, so if anybody is able to take trips, I guess in the evenings, I'm not sure, to DC, or something that they may want to try to experience something different, I just thought it was very interesting that it's free for the month of September. Wednesday is Baldwin Back to School Night. There's an activity fair at Osborne. Is that really just for students?
During the school day.
Okay. So I guess I hope to see our school board liaisons at the activity fair. I know that we have a PTSA meeting on the twentieth at seven PM, and there's just a number of other things that as school board members were attending, including legislative advocacy events and a tailgate for homecoming on the twenty-third. So thank you, everyone, for your attention to some of these matters.
Thank you, Mrs. Spall. Vice Chair Stevens?
Thank you. First of all, Mr. DeBeepe and Ms. Island, once again, you're spot on. We are very fortunate to have you, and listening to your voices remembers, reminds us who's most important, and that's our students. To address the issue of threats to our students in our schools, you know, as a parent of many, many years, there have, there have been a couple of times where I kept my kids home because there was a threat, because of that fear. It is something we're working on. There are no perfect answers. There are no simple answers. It's complex. It's frustrating. It's concerning. I think none of us enjoyed reading an email yesterday that there had been a threat to our students, to our school, even though it was an unfounded threat. And all the rumors that come around, they can be difficult to wade through and to find out what the truth is. But I think we have to listen to those people who know the most, that's the principal, that's the superintendent, when they send us that email, when they make that phone call that says the threat was unfounded. The threat was unfounded. It was scary. It has an impact on our children, even if it wasn't, even if it was unfounded. So it is really important that we, as a school, as schools and a school division, ensure that we're working with our students and we're following up with our students to make sure that they're okay, and to talk to them about what has them fearful. I work with students who've been afraid to go to school because of a threat, and not even a threat in their own school. So I think it's important that we remain cognizant of the impact it has on our children and even on our teachers. Because as teachers, being a teacher myself, I go through in my head almost every day, every option if someone comes in the building, if there's a threat. I wish I didn't have to do it. I wish I didn't think about it, but I do every single day, and I know every teacher I know does. And it's a pretty lousy thing to have to think about. And then whenever there's a threat, whether it's founded or unfounded, and they've all been unfounded, it brings all of that back to the surface. So let's focus on the mental health. And if you're watching and you have a child who's fearful, please call the school counselor first thing tomorrow morning and say, hey, this is what's going on. My child doesn't want to go to school because my child is scared. My child is having nightmares. Help me out. That's why the school counselors are there. And so please, make sure to reach out to them before the situation gets worse for your child. We need our children to feel safe. We need them to feel empowered. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Stevens. I'm going to say one thing about yesterday, and then I'm going to say something about next week. Yesterday, many of the parents of the Osborne students were hearing from their students before they heard from the school. I just want to say that that should be expected. When there is an incident at the school, our staff and our crisis team needs to be addressing that situation to stop anything from happening. It's not going to be instantaneous to the parents. When we do have verified the facts of what the situation is, we do communicate that to the parents, but it also needs to be, go through translation, and that takes some time. So if parents are expecting to hear something immediately, I just don't see how it's going to happen. We want to make sure that when we do communicate the event, we want to make sure that we have facts. And I hear, I see some head nodding. Thank you. If there were any Osborne parents that did not receive communication from Mr. Flugrath yesterday, please contact the office, because we send that out, however you have it, in your parent portal. If you want to be text, or called, or email, or all three, that information is all sent and it's all gone out. But if for some reason you did not get an alert, then please call the school, because we need to update your records for that. I know that happens sometimes, but it's important to have updated communication, records on file with the school office. And then one thing about next week, the purchase of eighty-seven hundred Centerville Road is still supported by this board. And we have approved it. It goes to city council, and we will be before city council on Monday at their Committee of the Whole to answer any other questions that they have, and to make a final presentation, so they can take a vote of whether or not they're going to support this or not. I just wanted to make the public aware of that. And if there's no further business, can I get a motion?
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to the school board, city of Manassas, adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Hollingsworth, second by Mrs. Brooks. Is the school board meeting adjourned? Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six zero. Thank you, and thank